Coming online, thank you. Thank you for turning up for the meeting today and we'll move on to the general straightaway. Apologies first.
Chair, we had apologies from councillor Calvert and councillor Fox is his substitute. We've also had apologies from councillor Oliver and councillor Stuteley is substituting. And councillor Lubbock has also sent apologies.
Thank you. Decorations interest everyone? Yes, one.
I was supposed to remember the public yesterday, they don't want to speak today and I'm not deciding what to vote for, someone decided he might just mention that because someone voted him.
Can I ask whether he wasn't allowed to speak? Mary, next one.
She's not put representations in on the item on St Margaret's. If councillor Peel wishes to declare a predetermined view, you need to do that now, please.
No predetermined, just change your watch when you have it all.
Due to our rules, you need to have made representations during the planning process. That member of the public did not do that during the process, there is no record of her making a representation.
Very favorable. Move on to the minutes of the last meeting to agree the correct record.
Chair, there is an error, I apologise for that. In, I know, I have to leave. In, sorry, I just need to find it there, but I have made a note of it and it's been corrected in the online version. Under item Hill House Road, where the member of the public, where the owner was speaking, I have misrepresented, he mentioned that something was 50 centimetres, 50 centimetres, that the building controls requirement was to relocate an item 50 centimetres, was 50 centimetres and I'd put it as 50, no, it should be 50 millimetres, so it should be 50 millimetres.
Well, that's confused me, anyway, that's the opposite one was obvious.
Fifty, yes, 50 millimetres is a lot smaller than 50 centimetres, so I've caused a little bit of concern with my colleagues, so if the chair could just cross sign out, thank you, the minutes will be subject to that amendment, thank you.
Okay, we'll move on to the applications and I go to the first one, which is 15 St Margaret's Street, and Mary, you can take this for the report and your other colleagues as well, thank you.
Thank you, Chair. So this is the planning application at 15 St Margaret's Street, it proposes the replacement of existing workshop to create a post-reissue grade with flexible workspace and associated outdoor living and housing space for us. So this is the application site outlined in red, it is between St Margaret's Street, St Bealevick Street, and then up to Swindon Street to the north and that's the spurs into Westwick Street at this point here. Around the application site you've got the Royal Arts Centre, the original St Swindon Church, this is part of the site here, and then contemporary extensions along this side joining it to the Warding Bestry, which extends towards the western boundary of the application site here. So this is the grade one of this building and the site also has a city centre conservation area. On the eastern boundary of the site, this building here is three to four storeys of flats, a similar building at this point here, also includes a retail unit to ground floor on the corner between St Bealevick and St Margaret's. The rest of the frontage through St Bealevick Street here is a mix of different residential units, some of which have residential uses above. The buildings at 45 to 49 St Bealevick are already listed and then other properties at 43, 51, 53 are locally listed. Between 47 and 49, there's a pedestrian access, which is part of the adopted public highway and that used as access through to Queen of Hungary Yard, which is this space here, so all the space around the site at this point is adopted public highway. There is also an area within the boundaries of the site which is retaining those public highway access rights. The applicants to pay the application to the Secretary of State to remove those adopted highway rights on that within the boundaries of their site. That application, writing currently with the planning application, but cannot be determined at the time of the planning, which is granted, and if it is granted, then no doubt that the connection to that stopping that order is approved or let it is approved. On the plan here, you can see the footprint of the existing building within the site, sort of L shape being wider at the north and narrower along the length here. That is, has historically been used for light industrial purposes, once for car acre repairs and is now used by the applicants as a post-reissue grade. There are two, there are the remains of two historic outbuildings in the southern corners of the site here. Vehicle access is under the buildings that cross over from St Margaret's Street, so there's right of access into the property at this point here, vehicles, and then there's also pedestrian access through a gate from Queen of Hungary Yard at this point. So the proposal is to replace that existing light industrial workshop with a building packed still to be used as a post-reissue grade. The place footprint is shown in brown on the plan here, so it will be replaced, the building in approximately the same position as the existing, but tends to be a larger footprint, and then to replace the outbuilding in similar positions to the existing. The orientation of the plan, we should note the difference in previous plans, so this is St Margaret's Street to the bottom of the screen, St Bealevick Street here with north in this direction. The red hatchback you can see on the plan around the footprint of the building here is an area that has been included in the application site to provide construction access and that would be temporary fencing around it through demolition construction period to protect the neighbouring properties and also the neighbouring trees outside the site. One of the proposed outbuildings, this one here, is proposed to be used to accommodate a kiln, the other building would be used for some office storage as well. Other items proposed within the application site are three S O P pumps, one on the east elevation here against the boundary wall and two against the southern boundary wall in this position here. The vehicle access from St Margaret's Street would be retained for loading bay and it would also be a indoor at this point, and within the new boundaries of the site, there would be a science store at this point here. The existing boundary wall and gate to Queen of Hungary Yard are proposed to be replaced and that pedestrian access would be retained from Queen of Hungary Yard. This is a much clearer plan, looking at the footprint of the proposed buildings, so on the ground floor of the main building, you've got just one single open plan workshop space across the ground floor. The position of the west elevation, which forms the boundary of the application site at present, would be retained and the northern and eastern boundaries of, or the walls of the building would be in similar positions to the existing. Within the courtyard again, you've got the kiln outbuilding here and the office and store here, those two outbuildings would be single story with flat roofs that pose half green roofs. The entrance door into the building would be at this point here and is proposed to help provide lower access into the ground floor of the building. The building is partly for a two-storey, so at the north end here, the wider part of the footprint would just be single story, but over the remainder it would be two-storey and on the first floor you would have this additional studio space. There would be double doors opening onto a terrace on the south elevation at this point and the squares that you can see across the floor plan here and across the roof here are all roof lights, which are proposed in each of these points. Looking at the elevations of the proposed building, this is the north elevation, so this is the one that would face in the direction of St Swindon's Road. Here you can just see the gable of the single story section of the northern end of the building and then beyond that it would rise up to one metre higher at the ridge over the two-storey section. To the side of the building here, you can see the north elevation of the Warding Bestry to the Arts Centre, so that is part of the grade one listing of St Swindon's Church. And on this side of the building, you can see the outline of the three to four, three to four storey flats at the heights to the east. You'll note the black areas here show where there's the difference in ground level, so the ground level within the application site is much higher than the ground level to what is a car park underneath the three, two to three floors of flats within the height, and that will become clearer in some subsequent slides. The proposed materials are red brick without any windows and clayed hand files to the roof. The red dashed line that you can see diagonally across the plan here is a 25 degree line taken from the centre point of the neighbouring windows. That is based on building research established guidance, which advises that any development which does not cross this 25 degree line from the neighbouring window would be unlikely to have a substantial effect on skylights perceived by that window. You'll see that in some subsequent drawings as well. So moving round to the east elevation, this is the side that traces towards those flats within the heights, so this is the single story arriba section at the northern end, rising every metre to the ridge over the two-storey section, with a number of roof lights across those two different roof flights. There'd be no first floor windows in this side elevation, but there are design details in the brickwork to indicate, or replicate, of historic block up windows that you often see on old buildings. And here you'll also go to see the terrace as proposed to the south elevation and section through one of the flat roof outbuildings in the south-east corner. Then looking at the south elevation, this is the two-storey gable facing towards the rear of the building, the front of St Bealevick Street, and this is where you've got the palace train around that first floor terrace with access from double doors from the first floor accommodation. And to the side you can see the flats and the windows within the heights of this side and you can see the height relative to those properties and also relative to the end gable of the bestry and the chimney of that gable to the church or the church used at the Arts Centre. Then moving round to the west elevation, this is the elevation which forms the boundary of the site facing towards the Arts Centre, again, single story section at this north end, which you can see relative to the two floors of flats in the heights beyond, and then the heights rise up to three floors of flats, you can see the top level windows there relative to the ridge height over the two-storey section of the building. Again, you've got roof lights across the elevation and no first floor windows, but those indications of block up windows set within the brickwork. This building here is part of the Biscuits Building that carries on round from St Margaret's Street to the corner of St Bealevick Street, which has two storey of flats at this point facing towards the site. Looking at some images which give you a clearer idea of how the building is proposed to look, this is standing within the courtyard space that would be formed between the main building and the two outbuildings, looking at the southern elevation and the proposed terrace across that. And then at the northern end of the building, this is where it was set down from the two story height, it's set down a metre to the ridge over the single story section here. Again, these are the windows to flats within the heights to the east side and this is the bestry, the gable of that facing towards the application site at this point. Then taking sort of aerial view here roughly, a little westerly, or from a more westerly direction, looking across the site, here again, you've got the single story area rising up to two story with the bestry connecting to the Arts Centre building here and the two and three floors are residential accommodation flats within the heights beyond that and in the background you can see the two proposed outbuildings and then reboos beyond that in relation to the buildings or view of the buildings which runs through St Bealevick Street. Then coming back to the section drawings, these again show you that indication with a dashed red line diagonally at 25 degree line from the neighbouring windows, which show you at this point here, from a first floor window, there are these doors to bedrooms on this elevation, at this point here, taking sections through the single story part of the proposed building, the ridge would be just below that 25 degree line. Moving through, taking sections through the two story part of the building where there's a slightly increased gap between the two sites and the windows, so it's quite a different level, taking 25 degree line from the centre point of those first floor windows to take that and the bridge two story section building, sits just below that as well. And then finally, another section moving further again through the site towards the southern end of the building, another illustration that at this point here, the ridge was sit below that 25 degree line, just to remind you that this has been provided to demonstrate that the building wouldn't cross that line, which guides us to believe that it's unlikely there would be a substantial effect on skylights to those windows which you can see. One final section, just to show you through the outbuildings and this is the elevation of the kiln room facing into the application site and section through the office building since the heights of those relative to neighbouring properties at the back of the properties that runs through St Bealevick Street and the flats within the building surround the corner of St Bealevick Street as well. So this is the east elevation of the office and store outbuilding that would face towards the access from St Margaret's Street and in the background you can see the gable of the original church building used at the Arts Centre. And then the south elevation of the outbuildings, this is the rear of the kiln outbuilding and the new boundary across the south elevation here with the two storey parts of the building seen beyond that, again, you can see that through the six feet height and the position of windows within the heights at the side. So looking at some photos of the site, this is standing on St Margaret's Street, looking through the right of access that the site has into the application site, you can just make out the roof of the existing building beyond the gates into the site here. So this is part of the building that stands around the corner on St Bealevick Street and has been there for years there, and on this side, this is the heights, you can see windows to, one of the windows to one of the years there, my understanding is that those flats in this part of the building have living accommodation facing towards St Margaret's Street and windows facing towards the application site on the elevation. And here you can see the gates into the car park, which is at a lower ground level under the building, whereas this side, the ground slopes up from St Margaret's Street towards the application site, so there's that difference in ground level from the application site here to the ground level within the car park and neighbouring property here. Then standing within the site to the side here, these are the gates that you saw in the previous photo, coming to the open space that's towards the southern end of the site and looking in a roughly northerly direction, this is the existing building that is proposed to be replaced. In the background you can see the red brick gable and chimney of the bestry to the Arts Centre building. And then to the side you can see the heights as we saw in the previous drawings with two windows on the south elevation on a retaining wall to the side with a number of windows to neighbouring properties across the first, second and third floors here. In subsequent photos you will see the view out of this kitchen window here and also a bedroom window on the east elevation here. Then this is standing just outside the western boundary of the application site, so this is where the wall of the existing building and this brick wall here form the boundary of the site and again, this is the bestry to the Arts Centre building and a tree within Queen of Hungary Yard sits inside, this is the area which is adopted public highway and this is the gate giving bestry access into the site at present. Moving out a bit further, this is looking at the southern boundary of the site, so here's that gate again that we saw in the previous photo, you can see the existing building that's proposed to be replaced and then the outbuilding, the remains of the outbuilding at the corner of the site here, is proposed to be replaced in the continuation of the sunroof here, this is all public highway outside the application site here on the main site. And then moving further back, again, this is standing between 47 and 49 St Bealevick Street, so this is the adopted highway to Queen of Hungary Yard, that gives public bestry access into the site through the exit at that point there. Then this is moving round to the eastern boundary, standing within that car park that exists underneath the flats for the heights, so there's a substantial retaining wall along the boundary here between the two different ground levels and you can just make out the east level of the existing building at the height of up here, the relationship that this has with the neighbouring flats and the neighbouring base at present. Then this is one of those views that I actually from the window of the neighbouring property, this is the second floor bedroom window in the east elevation of the heights, so this is looking directly across the application site. This is the northern end of the building where it's proposed to replace at a single story level and the roof at this point would be 1.6 metres higher at the ridge and 0.3 metres higher at the east. In the background beyond this, you can see the gable end of the bestry again and you should also note that this photo was taken a couple of weeks ago, late in the afternoon when the sun was coming round from the south west and it was shining towards this window here, and this is a bedroom but it's also used to hold office. Then standing at the face of that window, looking out across the side, you can see the retaining wall on the boundary to the car park just at the bottom of the photo here, the east height of the existing building, which is proposed to rise 0.3 metres and the ridge height, which is proposed to raise 1.6 metres and would be above the height of the east to the bestry gable that you can see here. Looking across the site here, you can see the tree within Queen of Hungary Yard there and then the gable of the original passage of St Swindon's Church in the background. And then this is the view going down the floor and standing in a window which faces to the south, this is the kitchen window within a separate townhouse property, this is again looking along the retaining wall between the car park at this lower level and the application site at the higher level, this is again where the single story section of the building is proposed to be with the two story section beyond that and you can just make out in the distance the view of St Giles Church Tower. And then finally, come right outside the application site, standing between St Swindon's Road and Westwick Street where two roads merge, looking towards the application site which is in this area here, in this view you can't see the existing building, but by virtue of the increase in height, you would make out the gable of the building in the space here between heights to this side and the bestry to the church on this side and these are sycamore trees which are just outside the application site except for that issue.
So you will be aware that there is an update report.
You will be aware that there is an update report, there's one point of correction in the report concerning the height of the existing building, this is 4.2 metres at the highest point and at the highest point the proposed would be 6.8 metres. There is also an additional representation in the report asking for deferral to the N E T to allow further time for the object to consider the impact on their rights to light and their property value. Neither compliance with the rights to light act nor property values and material planning considerations to be taken into account. The planning assessment of loss of light to neighbouring dwellings has been made in the report in relation to policy D O two with regard to building research established from guidance. It is not considered any part of the immunity of neighbouring occupiers would be so significant as to be unacceptable in planning terms. Whether a legal right to light would be affected is set for a prior pattern. Officers did not consider that any further assessment of the impact on loss of light is necessary to inform determination of the planning application stage. So moving on to assessments, the replacement of an existing workshop with a new building to similar light industrial to similar light industrial use is acceptable in principle. This is a constrained and sensitive site surrounded by residential uses and historic buildings, and it has limited access. It is not considered that any noise or disturbance arising from the use would result in unacceptable harm to residential immunity, subject to conditions to manage the hours the pottery studios opened in public and can be used by private artists, the operation of S one key pumps, and the addition of any new parts. The replacement building would be taller than the existing, this is polished, and it would ultimately help from windows of labour dwellings, and also reduce the amount of light that they receive. Having said these impacts, the changes understood and were abolished, however, those impacts are not considered to be so significant as to be unacceptable in planning terms. The building seems sized sensitively to response to the surrounding listed buildings and wider conservation area. It is considered that it will harm the contribution site makes for the conservation area without harming any of the heritage assets. There would be no other adverse impact that cannot be satisfied with these conditions, including the minimisation of the impacts during demolition and construction. Therefore, subject to the conditions within the report, the application is recommended for approval. Thank you.
Thank you, Professor. We've got one, two speakers, we've got two speakers.
We've got five.
First speaker.
Yep. Clive, if you come to the table, thank you.
Good morning, committee.
And you have three minutes, thank you.
My name is Farley, I'm a RGP, I live in the townhouse at the level eleven of the hides development. Some of the photos from my kitchen window just can show. My main concern here is that although there are reassurances in the report, that the, that's the, that's the, that'll be you from my kitchen now, although there are reassurances in the report that the loss of light will not be significant, I'd ask you to take a look at that photo, the height of the northern end of the building is going to rise considerably, and it's going to block half a lot of light currently entering my kitchen. I would, I, I think you, you people have got a really difficult job, because you've got to balance the needs and likes of twenty or thirty residents against the urge of two developers to come in and develop a property and get some money out of it. To cut an honest story short, I would suggest therefore that a compromise is needed, and I would say that, that an acceptable compromise to the residents at the hides, and hopefully to the developers as well, would be to make the entire building that they propose into a single story, or true single story, which would reduce the amount of light lost into the hides and the properties within it, and also give the developers plenty of space to make their pottery studio.
We've got, can I know anything here?
Yes, Chair, James.
James, would you like to talk? You have three minutes as well, thank you.
Thank you, Chair, and thank you, Maria, for your presentation. We purchased our site in 2022 in a state of neglect and disrepair, and were won over by the Paddy Chalmers dedication and historic yard, and given the previously granted planning mission, we saw viability to create an improved group building over time. At the same time as designing this scheme, we may do with the buildings that we already have and establish our pottery studio. We've got to know our local community, inviting neighbours or anyone who's ventured an interest to come in and see what we're up to, and discuss our long-term plans. We create a presence for our social media and website, and put up signage on the gates and entrance facing St. Margaret Street, explaining who we are, what we're doing, and how to get in contact with us. As a business that has been trained for a year or so, we receive no communications that object to our activities. Our proposal works within the same activities that we've already been undertaking as a pottery studio, but they make it possible for them to be more accessible with level access and accessible toilets. The creation of a bit more space in the ground floor and additional space on the first floor will help us retain our historic courtyard while improving our capacity for storage, increase our car sizes, and allow us to expand on our work exchange apprenticeships and studios for local artists. We withdrew our first planning proposal and conducted extensive additional research to amend our designs in response to objections and concerns raised during our first consultation. We've altered and clarified our hours of operation, closing to the public earlier in major late night venues for the art centre and arboretum. The height and massing of the main building have been designed with a great deal of considerations made from windows and made listed buildings, such as the increased refiches that reflect more accurately local vernacular, where historical England have deemed our proposal to be of a scale and architectural design that is sensitive to and appropriate to its context. The introduction of S one key pumps to make our building as environmentally friendly as possible, we intend to make this framework outside green and through plants in our courtyard and propose green roofing in the outbuildings, providing a calm space for habitats for local wildlife and a better outlook for ourselves and our neighbours. We hope that you'll approve the planning application so that we can contribute to the state of more actual space that connects the local community with our pottery and nature. Thank you very much.
We've got one, two questions, Maria, do you want to make, I was pretty good, first.
There are just a couple of points I wanted to raise. Firstly, in terms of the suggestion of a compromise scheme to make the building a single story, the application before you today needs to be determined as I've seen submitted, and in terms of just some of the context of the history of this application, the longer planning history of the site, this application agrees with permission following withdrawal and completely disapplication, which was for a large substantial two-story building throughout, that did raise the eighteen per cent, that concerns about heritage impacts, the applicants withdrew that to provide, completely reapply from ourselves, and a recent update came with this scheme, which is inside a compound from the original application. Going back a bit longer, you'll see in the East wing of the report, in 2016, there was a plan on site to replace this existing building with a terrace of three dwellings, they were largely two-story in height and have a similar relationship to the boundaries of the site. Although that permission lacked without being implemented, it was considered under largely the same development plan policies as it is today, and there has been a significant change in material considerations, so the granting of that please approval for a terrace of three dwellings on the site does hold some weight to the material consideration in the determination of this application. And I'd also just perhaps at this point like to add a recommended condition to the recommendation in your report, which would be just to make sure that it is used and retained as a light industrial use and not for other commercial uses, which it could be without that condition.
Okay, that sounds quite good, condition. We've got one, two questions now, I've got one star before I'll make. We've got this type of access getting into the building, is it the same access to get into the first floor?
No, it's for the, for the ground floor, there would be a staircase and a no-letting that's wrong.
Okay, so the toilet downstairs is a such room for wheelchair users, so you look the side to me, is the top one or the bottom one?
It's not shown to be on the plan here, that would be a building regulation issue as to whether they need to apply that compliance.
Fine, thank you. Counselor Sands, sue.
Can I look at the picture again taken from the kitchen window of the hides? Is there any way we can be shown on that photo exactly where the roof is going to be in relation to that photo?
So, so just a clarification, this is the window in question here, and then the view from it is not that one, not that one, but this one.
So what about, can you show me that sort of pointer where the new roof is going to be in relation to that?
So at the east level, so the point where the wall meets the roof, it would be 0.3 metres higher or thirty seven metres higher, and then the ridge, which is the sound of the picture here, would be 1.6 metres higher at this point here.
So that gives you a better idea of that, you know, accessibility to the hides and everything.
And then that's over the single story section at this point of the building, and then the ridge would rise again another metre, so it would be 2.6 metres higher than the existing, that will be the way it rises to the first floor section.
Emma.
Thank you, I've got a question about the materials to be used in that, and there was a recommendation to use timber rather than aluminium first for the windows, and they've been tired in advance, and you can't tell whether it's something that the exterior recognition, or whether it's actually accurate.
Yes, so there is a recommended condition to agree all the material details and specifications of what they use on the developments. The application does propose aluminium windows, and that is the same that was approved on the 2016 permission for the three dwellings, so we, it would be difficult to resist aluminium windows here, and as planning officers, we don't necessarily prefer timber, timber would also be acceptable as a more traditional alternative. And in terms of the roof tiles, through the pre-application discussions that we had, different roofing materials were considered, there's a lot of clay hand tiles around site, indeed you can see on the image here, you've got several in different colours around the site, and so clay hand tiles again would be contextual, as will slates, and the, and the conservation officers have suggested that slates might be more appropriate, but through that condition, we can consider the precise tiles to be used and where you ask.
Thank you very much for your presentation, and I think the pictures, which were very clear. I like the idea of a pottery close to a potter gate. Could you tell me a little bit about the kiln? How, how's the kiln being powered? Does the kiln make much noise? Is there any fumes and pollution coming off the kiln? And what are the regulations relating to the fire associated with having a kiln? Or what would be the amount of these many buildings?
So my understanding is that the kiln and the housing existing was in operation, they are electric, they are virtually silent, standing in the next door, it wasn't apparent that it was in operation at a very high temperature, there are no specific fumes generated by them. Within the kiln building, there is supposed to be an extractor fan, that's like a domestic extractor fan that you get in a bathroom or a kitchen within a house, so it's, it's very low level, and that's just by ventilation to the roof, it's not actually extract any specific fumes. In terms of the fire regulations, the applicants have considered what they need to do to comply with, to comply with the fire regulations and build that into their design.
Okay, any more questions, Phil? Just speak.
I've just wondered, maybe go back to the photo of the access side.
Long topic.
That one?
Yeah. Look, how tall is the, is, is that, is this, this building side, and we're about getting equipment in and out?
Yeah, at a guess from that photo, I would say it's between three and four metres high, you can see that there is a sort of transit van, which has access to the site, and clearance there. The application is supported by a quite comprehensive construction management plan, which is considered the type of vehicles and how many vehicles would be able to access the site to facilitate development. They have talked about using a timber truck, which would fit the constraints of that access there to provide materials on site, and if larger vehicles are necessary for bigger deliveries, then they would off-site transfer them to the timber truck and take them onto the site using that, they would be spaced within their site for an access to two vehicles to be parked at any time, or if there's a skip, then they're going to be spaced for one, so they have thought through those access and parking restrictions there.
Counselor Sands, Mike.
Thank you, Chair. Looking at the existing building, I'm guessing, I could be wrong, that the roof material is probably contains asbestos, I'm also guessing that all the necessary provisions have been put in place for the safe demolition of the building and any asbestos that may be used in the actual, bit below the roof, so to speak.
Yes, so since the applicants applied, they have had contractors remove asbestos from the existing building, and with the application, they've provided all certificates to demonstrate that, which is acceptable to environmental protection, so there's nothing further required on that.
Okay, thank you, we will move on, the engagement to the room, and I'll move on, have we got a second? Thank you. Comments, anyone? No comments? Counselor Stewart.
Yes, thank you, Chair, I think the, the objector is right, this does always give us a dilemma when you're weighing up what looks like quite a nice development against their needs and potential for loss of light and, and use, but I think in this case, the legislation and the, the, the application that's been put before us doesn't give us any room to object on planning grounds, so therefore I will support this, but sympathy with those misfits, thank you.
Yeah, the sand card away, Counselor Stewart here, well, I can't remember having a solder there, but we got permission for the planks to be built, it's a marvel, it's big, so, which is that, one's on the right hand side, so we went all the way round the back of this place and everywhere, there was quite a few objections to that being built, which we carved in the long one, which is now where you're living. So this, this tiny of this, this place around the back, I think, I think that'd be a good asset, and hopefully, it got a while in the name of, so I'll be building further. Anyone else? Okay, we move on to the room, and that's with the recommendation as well, which is...
And the additional, yeah, so one additional condition recommended, and to move these to light industrial, I mean, that one contributes.
Okay, thank you. All who's in, very quickly, show.
And that's, Chair, that's a recorded vote, so please keep your hands up until I call your names, thank you. Counselor Driver, Counselor Mike Sands, Counselor Haynes, Counselor Herkner, Counselor Fox, Counselor Peak, Counselor Prinsley, Counselor Young, Counselor San, I'm sorry, Counselor Thomas, and Counselor Stewart.
All who's against, please show. Abstentions.
Counselor Sue Sands abstaining.
Okay, so it's been approved, thank you very much, and we will move on to, next one, which is...
The next one.
Can you still this, the passion? Do you see a varied indication? Fusion of fiction? Oh, one missing councillor. We will move on to the next planning application, which is through car wash place. I think I'll make this a clear one, it's where I take my car to be cleaned and washed, it would be very good, but I ain't got anything to do with the shower or anything.
Chair, I'll record that as another interest.
Thank you. The passion from Tates' booth. Thank you.
The application under consideration is for a car rental premises at Switch Road. And as I just noted, there's been an update on the update report changing the site boundary. From the agenda that was published before. This site, this site is currently a car wash. And what they're proposing to do is extend the business by creating a new car rental premises. The site has a few structures within it at the moment, which include a canopy which is around here. And you've got a few like structures here and here. And the majority of the site is pretty much empty. You've got, this is an area for car washing where the car cleaning services would be here. And the rest of the site around here is unused. This is mostly grassland. And here, there's also just unmade grounds, not really used for anything. Around the site, there's also a number of trees that surround the site. So with the proposal, the proposal would be to have a car rental and that would include providing a new rental office, which would be around here. And also the back of the site, this area here, would be used as the car storage. So the rental vehicles would be parked around here. And then the rest of the site would remain pretty much more or less the same. And in front of the rental office here, you would have two disabled bays here, which would be a drop-off and pickup point for the vehicles. And overall, in terms of the parking provision, the proposal around here provides for nineteen vehicle parking spaces, which will include. Six long day parking bays, thirteen or more parking bays, as well as you have the two drop-off points here at the front of this site. Here we've got the proposed drawings for the rental office. The proposed office is quite a small scale, carbon-like building and it would have glazing mostly at the front and also. There would be cladding around the back and the side. Building is quite small scale and it's got a platform. Looking at the section drawings, you can see that the building of the site, the car office. You wouldn't really be able to see from outside of the site due to the trees that are around the side as well as. They may bring property, which completely covers the visibility of the car rental site. Here we've got the closed-up version of the proposed plan. During the assessment of the application, we received a number of objections and within that, there was a number of issues. Concerning traffic, noise, biodiversity, climate change. And all of these issues have been considered in the assessment of the application. So one of the key issues that we had to address with this site was highway issues. During the course of the estimate, there's been negotiations between the applicant and the highway authority to ensure that. There wouldn't be any harm to the highways and increased impact on each switch road. So one of the things that has been done here is to improve the movement of traffic within the site. So this site has two separate points of access and exit. Here is the entrance into the site and here you've got the exit. So what has been proposed is at the entrance, there would be clear signs and markings showing how cars would be navigating in the site. So you've got a separate one for rental vehicles and you've got a separate one for vehicles that will be going to the car wash. So that is that traffic for the car rental would be able to just come in, go straight here. And then you've got the ramp, which would be used to provide access to the car storage area here at the back. And for the vehicles that would be coming in for the car wash, they would be able to just to come in directly and go through here. And for exiting, the car rental vehicles would come, they would come out here and also the car wash vehicles would also be following the same flow of traffic. Coming out here, so this would be properly managed at the site, so making sure that is clear which way to go and there isn't any confusion. With how to use the different sites, the different uses of the site. And so there would be like road markings and signages installed, so that would be quite clear. Where to go if you're using the car wash and if you're using the car rental and also ways of exiting. With these kind of measures of traffic management on the site. It is considered that this is not going to cause any issues for a switch road in terms of cars potentially. Queuing up or increasing traffic flows. And with the use of the car rental and the car wash, we do acknowledge that there would be obviously more vehicle movements. Queuing from the site with vehicles coming in into the car rental for drop-off and pickups and also vehicles coming into the. Car wash, but this generally overall is not going to significantly increase the traffic levels. And if switch road, it's not going to be too different from what the current situation is, but with the. Proposed site layout, this is kind of sufficient measures to ensure that the traffic. Does not overall affect the use of a switch road as one of the main roads into the city centre. And also one thing to note here is that there was an issue with potentially. This site reducing the car parking provision for residents in the local area. So what has been proposed within this car storage area, this will store the vehicles for rental. As well as have additional capacity for additional vehicles to be parked. So people coming to the site, there wouldn't be any need for them to be parking on a switch road and taking parking from. Some of the residents in the local area, so all of the parking needs of the site would be met within the site. And so with the site being on a switch road, this is quite a sustainable location. Because it's easily accessible by bus and also it's within walking distance into the city centre. So if you were coming in to rent a vehicle, you would be able to get a bus to the site. You would also be able to walk to the side from the city centre. There is a bus stop just immediately outside of the site, you can't see that here. And it's quite a sustainable site in this location. This is an image of the site at the moment. Here are some of the nearest residents over on a switch road and this is the site fairly mostly undeveloped. And this would be the entry point and this would be the exit. And one consideration that had to be had was to do with the impact on residential properties which are directly opposite the site. We've had concern regarding light pollution, would anticipate that there would be some external lighting and the property. And this could potentially have an impact on the residential properties in terms of light pollution. So we have recommended that the details for any of the external lighting that would be used on the site. Would have to be submitted for us to consider, just to ensure that the light levels are appropriate. And wouldn't be having a negative impact on the residents. So this would be a condition which the applicant would have to discharge after. And they will submit the details to us for us to assess and then the condition would be discharged before any of the external lights are installed on the site. And also, security is another issue that has been raised. And for a proposal like this, we would anticipate that the applicant would have security measures on the premises. So that would be respect something like CCTV alarm system. So the applicant is kind of responsible for ensuring that they have applied the appropriate. Security measures for the site to address crime and ensuring that they are deterring potential criminal activity at the site. And in regards to the opening hours, the opening hours for the car rental would be the same as the opening hours for the car wash. So there's not going to be increased activity on the site outside of the existing hours of operation. So we would anticipate that vehicles coming in twenty-four seven because the opening hours are limited already. This will also be conditioned to make sure that the car wash does operate according to those opening hours. And so within the site, you can kind of see how it's very undeveloped and. and the ground surfaces at the site are different. And one of the issues that we had to address was flooding. There is some surface water flooding outside of the site around your switch road. And at the moment, there is quite large parts of the site which are unmade, which is permeable. And what has been proposed in terms of the ground servicing is for the site to be grasscrete. So that would allow water to infiltrate into the ground. So the area at the back around all of this would be grasscrete, which would allow for the parking and as well as allow rainwater to infiltrate into the ground. And also the unmade areas like here south of the site would mostly remain unmade. I'll just go back to a different drawing. Just to... So here, all of this would be grasscrete. So vehicles can be parked but also the water would infiltrate into the ground. And then most of this here would remain unmade just because of the trees here and the roof protection areas. So nothing here would be done with the exception of the ramp, which should be for access to the private car parking area here. And with the ramp in itself, it's set a gradient that is above the tree roof protection areas. So that wouldn't have any impact on any of the trees here, which have roof protection areas that extend out here. And also in relation to the protection areas here because of the trees around here, when it comes to construction, it has been proposed that reduced digging ledgers would be used. So that's also making sure the roof protection areas here are being avoided and there wouldn't be any harm to the trees. So in terms of the servicing materials, the grasscrete is a preferred material compared to using tile marking. Tile marking is not annual. And what we propose in with the site is going, is envisaged that the site would be well maintained. And this, all of this area here is not going to be accessible to the public. It would only be members of staff that would be going in and out using the ramp to bring cars out and take cars back. So there would be very low vehicle movements to and from. And also the applicant has informed us that they would also be responsible for maintaining the site to ensure that the grasscrete does remain effective in terms of absorbing water and infiltrating into the ground. And with those measures, this is a good form of sustainable drainage. And since south of the site, there is an apple tree that got over there along the boundary as long as some other informal planting. So biodiversity is a consideration which we had to consider in this application. And regards to biodiversity, this came with some landscaping along this border here as well as at the back of the site. And during the application, it was submitted with three impact assessments as well as an ecological survey. And within that, there were some enhancements which were recommended and this would be applied as a condition. So what that means was that within the ecological survey, there wasn't any significant ecological value that was found at the site. It was considered that this site in itself would have a negligible ecological value. But also at the same time, they did find that this site has the potential for accommodating for a new house that uses habitats that are nearby. So what has been proposed is within some of the trees here would be to install back boxes as well as bed boxes. Because the trees around the site, they do provide a habitat for birds as well as bats. So we want to make sure that there is some provision for habitats for them. And this has been conditioned in the report. And also to the back side. To the back of the site here is just informal overgrown vegetation. And in the ecological reports submitted, they did find that there was a grass snake present, but there wasn't any anything else of ecological value present within the site. And as part of the consideration, we have considered the effects of the use of the car rental on the local amenities spaces. Here at the back of the site is Dambie Wood Park. So with this area here functioning as the car storage area, we would require for some additional buffers and screening along here just to make sure that the use of the site here is not going to negatively affect the use of the amenities space here at Dambie Wood. So what has been proposed is along here with the existing vegetation, there would be an additional hedging planted along here as well as five trees are also going to be planted here, which would create an additional buffer and give additional screening. So you wouldn't really be at the park here and also having use of cars parked here. This would be screened. And as part of the biodiversity consideration in regards to the hedging, the proposal is for the hedging to be a mixed species heading. So in the ecological report, they've identified the type of different hedges to be mixed together and the exact quantities in order to create a hedge that is the most suitable as a quality for habitats and allow for ecological success as a habitat. And in regards to, obviously, the site would have some provision for employment. With the car rental, there would be provision for four full-time positions as a result of this, as well as two part-time positions would be created by the new car rental.
Thank you very much for that. Questions to the officer? I've got one or two.
Okay, we've got a statement to be read out.
Oh yes, we have got a statement to be read out. Thank you.
Okay, so I'm going to read out the document on behalf of a director. As a resident that lives directly opposite the site of the proposed development with my young family, I'd like to add to my original objections by responding to a few of the points related in the report and make some additional points. According to the planning application on the same site, the land behind the car wash into the overflow car park was refused in twenty twenty on the grounds of it spoiling the public green space, Dambie Play Park. This spoiling of the green space will be even more prominent with this new proposal and it would be inconsistent for the council to now approve a more intensive development on the same site. Lack of due process. Since the planning application was submitted, a food outlet started operating on the site without submitting a planning application or notifying the local residents. The owner of the food outlet was told to use our home address by the landlord in its advertisements despite the land being in a different postcode. The food outlet has now been told cease trading by the council. We are concerned that this exhibits a track record by the owner of the land to skip due process and proper procedure and we're worried that they will not carry out the conditions of planning agreed. Lighting, security and operating hours. Responding to concerns with increased crime in the area, the report claims that if satisfied, the owner will be able to secure the site. However, good lighting is often one of the most effective security measures. So it is likely the development will contribute to light pollution through the night. While operating hours have been conditioned for car rental businesses... Well, sorry. While operating hours have been conditioned for car rental businesses often have twenty-four hour car drop off service. So it is likely that the site will contribute to noise pollution at unusual hours. Traffic. The report does not mention that the queue for the car wash often backs up into the main intersection road. The new car rental business will compound this, creating road conditions more dangerous for younger families than on it, where it wanted to cross into Dambie Play Park. Biodiversity, sustainability and flooding. The council should be promoting sustainable travel with such as cycle lanes and public transport. Improving the level of vehicle access business will add traffic in and around Norwich and help reduce city sustainability goals. The report states that despite the removal of local biodiversity, the proposal will have improved landscaping value. Landscaping is not sustainable biodiversity and removing the grassland will reduce connectivity for the local wildlife in the area. The report claims that the proposed development has a neutral impact on the natural environment, but through the removal of trees and grasslands, this can't be correct. Furthermore, the report only recommends high diversity landscaping and does not condition it. The report accepts that the intersection road area is prone to surface water flooding, but claims that the grasscrete material that will be used for the proposed car park will mitigate this. The grasscrete will not be better at mitigating flooding than the existing grassland and will need to be regularly maintained. The car parks places opposite the site are made of grasscrete and almost no grass is growing there. I urge the committee to reject the application. It does not serve the local community, will contribute to degradation of our local environment and green spaces where sites such as Dambie Play Park are still waiting for promised repairs and is conflicting against Norwich's sustainability aspirations.
Thank you for that. We've also got the application here, question eight. And you have three minutes as well. Thank you.
Good morning. Good morning. How can I help you to my service station which I'm going to have a car wash? The former use of the petrol station ended a while ago. The site has existing infrastructure including a well-designed access point that facilitates vehicle movement when entering and exiting the site without impacting the current traffic movement of your switch road, primarily for regular routes into the city. The proposal maximizes the efficiency of a crowded site. The car wash facility will remain but will be reduced in size to ensure that it still works as the facility. This creates space for a small vehicle rental business comprising a small single-storey reception building and vehicle storage and parking. Entrants through the site will reuse the existing setup but will be delineated to separate the car rental and the car wash businesses. Within the site, a runway system will see cars exit in a more deadly fashion. Highways have been consulted and induced to focus again. As is normal, there will be slight engines from most outlines required to envisage a suitable working condition that seeks to find these outs that will be tied to highway approval as well. The site layout has been tailored to protect the existing trees on the site boundary. And as such, stock landscape green board along the boundary will be retained. The western section of the site is currently a nomad land that was used to store the rubbish, but there is now overgrown with weeds and scrub. We propose to tidy up that area and lay grasscrete base to store the rental vehicles. On-site parking provisions include spaces allocated for longer-term customers. During the course of the application, we have the aim to create a strong landscape screening along the western boundary. Currently, this is sporadic self-tuned vegetation. We propose to maintain what is there and build a gap of new hedges, shrubs and to include new trees. The plan seeks to minimize the impact on the natural habitat. While the removal of one small tree is proposed, this is opposed by the introduction of five new trees. The grasscrete provides a landscape appearance and helps with surface water contamination. By improving landscaping and removing, the removal of an attractive degree, the project aims to elevate the visual appearance of the area. The new landscaping to the rear will also create a better sense of good interviews from the park. We have support for highways and planning department. We have hoped to have your support today. On my final note, we understood that the food bank did turn up on-site. That wasn't approved by our client, but nothing to do with it. But we've been open to that since we've taken away. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Do you want to comment on anything, Neil?
I have a few things to say.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, just wanted to raise a few, just to respond to a few of the points that were raised and that didn't carry out. In terms of the planning history, the director notes that there was a refusal for a car park on-site in the city, which is true. And there was a, what we considered to be a public car park composed from this rear area of the site. There was a policy issue there with new car parks. There was, we have a specific policy which aims to locate new car parks in the city centre and then to limit the numbers of car parking spaces that they provide overall. This would not be a sustained vehicle, it's a different, a different commercial use. We refused it for that reason. We also refused it on reasons relating to the impact on the use from the park behind. There are no landscaping proposals on that boundary within that application. So this application does better in that regard as well. In terms of the matter of a food truck operating from the site, that's a separate enforcement issue, not part of this proposal and doesn't need to impact upon our decision with this scheme as support today. There was an issue about lighting, potentially causing light pollution. Now I recommend an inclusion which relates to the agreement of details of external lighting which is referenced in her presentation. And then relating to the biodiversity enhancements, it's the statement that there's no condition related to that, but I just want to note that there is a condition which talks about ecological enhancements, which we understand to be bed boxes, back boxes and native hedgerows. Details of those would be required by that condition and that would be required to implement it as we can find in the balance.
Thank you for that. We will want questions. I've got two or three. Can you tell me the rank is called up or down? Is it called up towards the back or down towards the back?
The landables are on the site, they vary. The land goes down at the back here where the vegetation is. And then the main part of the car park is on a higher level. If you look here, there's a slight dip that goes into the back here, so...
So are you thinking that up or keep the same level? Or put it like that even?
The intention is, the proposal includes the rank span is the same, the same rating that is the car rental, the storage of cars will be on a lower level than the rest of the site.
Okay, so it's called down, yeah? And one other question, combination, conter, but anything. It used to be an actual pub garage. Has that all been cleaned up since then or would it have been cleaned up on recent firsts?
We have consulted with environmental protection and we have attached a condition to the site that should there be any contamination found during the works, the works would have to stop and that we'd have to solve the contamination issue and submit details with our environmental protection. So that has been considered because of the history of the site being a petrol station. There might be potential for that. So we have condition for that should that be the case.
Okay, thank you. We'll go out there, Mike.
Thank you, Chair. Two questions really. First one, I'm guessing as the building is described as a cabin, it's rather than being a specialist building constructed on the site, it would be a modular building built elsewhere and brought into the site. And second question, as there may be a need for some sort of security lighting, can this be conditioned to its low-level lighting rather? can this be conditioned so it's low-level lighting rather than upon tall pyramids? And also, can it be conditioned that the security lighting be within light spectrums that are not adverse to nocturnal wildlife?
All of those details would be considered when the details of the lighting are submitted. That will be via a discharge of condition application, so the applicant would submit to us details of the lighting that they're proposing to put in, and at that process, we will then consider the details that are submitted and negotiate with them and make changes just to make sure that the lighting would be appropriate for the residents as well as the bats as well. So that would be considered under a separate discharge of condition application relating to the lighting.
Thank you. Heather?
So the office, I do not see that would be a modular building. I mean, potentially it might not be a modular building, but it is just a small-scale building that they're proposing. It's a small office. It is modular, okay, so I'm correct, yes, the building is a modular building?
It's not.
It's not. It is not a modular building, sorry.
That's okay, it makes little difference.
It's a small building, yes.
Thank you. I've got a couple of other questions. First, is which tree will be removed and why? Is there anywhere that could be careful why there's some trees removed? Then from the objective, from the like the biodiversity improvement, why is it going to be conditioned? Just wanted to make sure that it would be conditioned. And then I have a question about EV charging. I just try and understand what share of rent across would be. Think it's all like the charging would be spread over the place and not, just want to understand what number of grant cards would actually be included in the business. And then my last question is about air conditioning, but there's not a modular house. Cabin, I just wonder whether that, why that is considered necessary, seeing that air conditioning is such an energy cutting thing, and if there would be any way of making it just a bit better internet to avoid the need for air conditioning.
So the EV charging points, so in total, the site would have six EV charging points. So it was one here on the disabled bay, and we've got two here, as well as another two at the back. But there is a total of six charging, EV charging points altogether in the site. And trees, the tree to be removed is a sycamore tree, which is in a poor condition and it's not of high value. So they have recommended that it is better of that, that tree is removed, it's just that one. But all of the, none of the other trees are being removed. That one being removed is also going to be compensated with the additional trees that they are going to be planting. Okay, the tree is, would be one of the trees here, I believe, T15, which is somewhere here. Biodiversity condition. We have conditions for the enhancements to be installed. So if the paragraph 12 of the delegated report sets out all of the conditions which we would be applying, and within that, there is a condition for ecological enhancements to be installed according to the ecological appraisal, and also for the replacement trees and hedging to be installed and maintained according to the plans which have been submitted. And the works that are also in condition that they have to be done in accordance to the tree survey that was done, so we have condition for those things as well.
Yes, Chair.
There is a question around the air conditioning, and I'd just like to come back on the EVs, because I'm still trying to understand whether this would be the cars we manage now, are they going to be EV or is it for people who need an EV car and want to be charged while they're using an EV car, which is relevant, then which other phase would be for the actual rental cars? Which of them would be in the?
But my understanding would be that it would be EV cars that would be for rental, so they would have some provision of cars, there are going to be EV vehicles, which the customers would be able to hire, so they have a facility for that by providing the EV base. You've got three here, three EV ways here, and you've got another one here. And then at the back here, you've got additional long-stay car storage and some additional here. Does that mean something else, sorry?
Air conditioning.
Air conditioning. What was your question, putting air conditioning? I would say, yes, I think air conditioning would be required just to monitor the temperature in the building they had proposed it, and we don't think that this is going to have any significant impact, having the air conditioning units there.
So on a development at this scale, we don't have control via our policies on any energy usage or use of renewable energy or anything like that. There's no policy basis for us to question that. It's being proposed, we consider the impact of it in terms of noise, but we don't have any control over the impact of that intervention decision.
Well done.
On a level of this scale.
Well done.
Yeah, thank you. councillor Sands asked, I know, a burning question, which was directly effects of lighting on insects. But just on the biodiversity status, so bats and birds use trees in preference, like bats use trees in preference to bat boxes, is my understanding. So the ecological enhancement of adding bat boxes to existing trees doesn't seem much of an enhancement when they actually prefer trees. And also, like the biodiversity status is considered, like the biodiversity impact is considered negligible, but there's a grass snake there. I don't think the grass snake is negligible, and brambles and scrub provide food for birds and insects, and I don't feel that that's negligible. And replace, you know, putting in a bird box, well, snakes don't use trees, basically. So I wondered how the impact of a bat box improves that.
Okay, so I think it's important to note that the, we've had an ecology appraisal submitted to the application, it's assessed the quality and species that are using that area of land, and then made some recommendations, ethical recommendations on what's an appropriate way of dealing with this application. The recommendations that have come out of it are enhancements, not mitigation. So it's not that they consider that there's actually harm to biodiversity, which then needs to be mitigated for, it affects the impact on the quality of that space, because it doesn't offer excellence, habitat for species, but that we should be seeking enhancements which we can file by condition. So the installation, there's lots of one tree, there's a plant of five trees, and some native hedgerow, mixed native hedgerow. And there's also the installation of bat boxes, which should offer an enhancement of the existing situation. So I think we can feel too trivial in that regard, that the overall impact on biodiversity will probably be a positive one.
Okay. Councillor Prinsey?
Thank you very much for the presentation. I do remember when that was an SO garage. I can see on page 53 of the bundle we've been given, that was an installation of a 35,000-litre diesel tank group in 1996. What has happened with that diesel tank? Is it still there? Is it underground? It's a very likely complication as a result of this massive big tank, which I imagine is still there.
Sit down, pardon me.
As far as I know, we don't know whether it's still there. The condition that we applied helps us in that regard, because it provides us with a mechanism for securing it to be decontaminated, shouldn't be found. The proposals are unlikely to disturb the ground hugely, because we're open to restoring the foundation and anything like that. It might be, so it's possible that it's there, but it will stay undisturbed during the course of the proposals. If it is found or disturbed, then we would need to see details of how they're meant to be removing it, decontaminating the land and preventing any harm to, yeah, so, so, so.
Councillor Sands, Sue?
Actually, this is, there's questions to be shared. Using your local knowledge, you talked about, you know, the queuing of cars for the car washes, which were, do you find that to be an issue?
No.
So you don't think that the added cars perhaps are going to come in and out, are going to come in?
There's hundreds of cars used, but that's a little car, calling in, out or down. I mean, a bit of the bank's always been locked up, even when the garage was open. But you've got Downey Park behind that, you've got Downey Woods to the left, you've got a pathway to the left as well going down into the woods, you've got two big chalk pits and waste grounds behind the park. Behind that, you've got a golf course with 18 greens on it and more land the other side of that. To the left of it, you've got the Wentworth Riverbank and the Eaton Marshes, there will be them. There's plenty of other estate to disappear in. So I can't see, just with a snake being in that area, it wouldn't make that much difference to me. I just think it would be a lot better if it was cleared and looked nice. They've put five extra trees in, which is good, you said, the bare house still works and stuff like that. But they've put five extra trees in to take one sycamore down. I mean, sycamore are valuable, I know, right?
Just correct, I didn't say enough, the enhanced work.
Okay, thank you, sorry. It's me. Anyone else? Councillor?
Yeah, I was just wondering with the five trees that are going to be planted and the mixed hedgerow, is there any conditions around the size of the trees and how long they will be maintained? Well, I mean, not one of the tiny ones that planted and they die quite quickly. What conditions have we or can we impose around making sure that these do grow to be nicely established into our trees as soon as possible?
There's lots of oak trees throughout there, all along the entrance road and around that area. Well, it sounds like five oak trees, and they've been there for six, seven hundred years.
Within the condition, there would be details to promise for that tree planting season and the maintenance of them, just to make sure that they have the best opportunity to grow and to be established.
Do we get to say what trees can go in or not? Do we get to say what trees to be planted?
What sycamores?
We can, we can influence it, yes, and we would be consulting with our chief catch-up, so who has a good idea of what would be suitable for the site, what would be the best chance, the best chance of survival and the best of our terms of biodiversity and the surety.
Mike?
I'm guessing that it would be good to put in those five trees, at least one or two that are good forage trees for birds and insects. I don't ask you what sort of trees they would be, because I don't know.
Okay, since no more questions, we'll move on to discussions. But first, the recommendation is to approve our move there. Second, thank you. Discussion, anyone? No discussion, we'll move on to the board. Councillor Prinsey and Councillor Sands, out of there.
Yes, thank you, Chair. I think this is another finely balanced one for me. Looking at the picture we had of the area of grassland there, I find it difficult to imagine that this is actually a neutral proposal. And it doesn't sit well with me, clearing an area of grass where there is some biodiversity. I understand it's a small area compared with the whole. It doesn't sit well with me clearing an area for cars, so I can't vote for this one.
And Sands?
Sort of similar in a way, there is, with that area of land, it's described as scrub land, it's within the title of the whole area, which means whoever owns it at any time could go in there and clear the scrub from there for whatever reason they have. They wouldn't need planning application or anything to just go in there and clear the scrub. I'm correcting that, I assume.
There's a lot done of it over the years.
Yeah.
Okay, no other discussion? All those in favour, please show.
Chair recorded vote, so it's councillor Driver, Mike Sands voting in favour, councillor Prinsey, councillor Susans, councillor Thomas.
All those against, please show.
Councillor Fox voting against.
Extentions?
Those members abstaining are councillors Hercner, Peak, Young and Stewley.
Okay, so that's been approved. Thank you very much. Can I just, I see into the plan for you, but can I just wish anyone who's up for reelection this year, hope you do well in May and hope to see you back next year? Okay, thank you very much.